We also, Allison.
Yeah, I had to start a new event, but um. It's now called CSB 921, but.
Meeting come to order again, please. Apparently we're connected. So with that, Mr. Gold, would you give your missive and introduce yourself and try to maintain your comments less than three minutes? Thank you.
Stephen Gold, I live on Grove Street. Basically, I'm here to complain about the dismal situation at the dinghy dock. The dinghy dock is extremely overcrowded. It's gotten to the point where boats are being damaged, for starters, after paying a hefty fee. There's a safety issue. We are an aging town, and people often have to climb over two or three boats to get to their own dinghy because tying up with a really long line is the only way to be secured. I'm somewhat completely disappointed in the fact that the committee that should be and could be proposing solutions to this hasn't been allowed to meet for over a year. And as the Select Board iterated at a recent meeting, their plate is pretty full. So I think it's time to take charge of this situation. Several months ago, I witnessed a meeting here where some of the dinghy fees were increased, some boats were given discounts, and it was pointed out, not entirely true, but the fact that most boats, most dinghys, are used for the purpose of getting to and from a moored boat. Well, why are we filling up that space with kayaks when we could have a rack system, just like there isn't at McGuntacook Lake or whatever? Even if we had to sacrifice two precious parking spaces in the lot, we could put up a couple of racks. I would hope that for the safety of all concerned and the ease of all concern, that this could be addressed before next season.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you for coming, and I have note of it, and good point. Thanks so much. Good to see you. Any other public comment on non-agenda items, Mr. French? You're allowed.
Thank you. You did an actual job.
And since your picture's on the wall, you don't have to introduce yourself.
I will. I'm John French, 23 John Street, a concerned citizen. I just wanted to build on what Steve just said. A lot of people have been asking me about when you guys are going to bring the committees back. I know that you're not too enthused about it, but it's time. These guys do, these people do a lot of good work. They may not always agree with what they do. I certainly not over the years, but they have done good work. We should be very proud in this community to have, what, 26, I believe we had at one time, if I remember right, committees that did a lot of good work for the town. And they were, well, so I just wanted to bring that up. It's time to think about it. It's time to bring it forward.
Message received, John.
All right. Thank you, one and all.
Good to see you again. With that, if there are no other non-agenda comments, we will proceed to.
Sophie and I are really getting along. This is working great for me. I have a non-agenda response and comment. I mean, the, I don't think it's entirely accurate to say that we're not letting the committees meet or that all the committees have been stopped or, there are many committees that continue to meet. And there are committees currently that were required to have, such as Planning Board, Zoning Board, Cemetery Association. Some of those have been really hard to fill over the years. And I know it's more fun to be on, you know, a committee that, you know, the name of it is your exact topic of interest, but I do think we need to encourage some people who might have, you know, energy and sustainability goals to do things like, you know, the cemetery committee or to move around, or the planning board. So some committees, we are still having trouble filling. And so I'd like everybody to sort of keep that in mind. But that with the committees, we are, there's, there's certainly nothing stopping people from meeting. But for years and years, the committees got so out of control that there are so many ideas that the town, there's a huge backlog of things. If you read through our comprehensive plan, if you read through our downtown master plan, the documents approved by voters for the TIF districts, there is a backlog of really good work that the committees have done and sort of directed the town to do. Like, just look at the downtown master plan, for instance, all of the trees and bump outs and different things that for some reason, even though we go through this whole long process as a town and people vote on things, a lot of it doesn't get implemented. And so there has been a really big effort to try to get back to some of those core documents, to look at those and move forward on a lot of the ideas that committees have had over the years that haven't been, you know, town staff just hasn't gotten around to implementing. So nobody is, I think we're trying to go about the committee thing in a thoughtful way. I definitely agree that for the harbor committee, for sure, needs to start meeting. But it's also, we need to do it in a way that allows the Select Board to keep up with things and understand, too, because we've all had those frustrating times over the years where the committee's knowledge of something just exceeds the Select Board ability to sort of follow along and weigh in, and then it gets to a point where the committee's ready to act and the Select Board is just on totally a different page.
Right.
And so I think we just want to be thoughtful about that.
Absolutely. I agree with everything Allison said, and we will be addressing it very soon. Of all those listening, probably with some priorities, but also an approach that is going to work for all, all parties, board, town, staff, as well as individuals. But we absolutely encourage people to apply to various committees and including the Conservation Commission, which we need to reinstate. With that, we're going to move on to.
Could you summarize what BD, since some people may have been trying to watch the meeting?
Well, no, go ahead. Why don't you do it?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I thought BD made some interesting points about the, she was talking about the Washington Street sidewalk, for anybody that's listening at home, but missed BD Parker. She, we are, the town is expanding the sidewalk there along Washington Street and up toward the tannery. And so there are going to be some improvements, I believe, in front of the car wash, which was her area of concern. And she talked a lot about private property and how maybe we don't have any control there. But one of the things that we had talked about with that pedestrian safety resolution that we did, there was this sort of directive to town employees that when we do these projects, we're supposed to be looking at the opportunity to use the public right-of-way as an opportunity to achieve some of these goals, like connectivity and pedestrian safety, which have been so emphasized in the comprehensive plan. But I think that is, like, most of the time, those sidewalks are all in the public right-of-way. And so it's not private property. And I do think there's been a tendency in the past to, when we go to do these projects, to kind of take the easiest route in terms of not having to have a difficult conversation with a property owner. But a lot of the time, it means that, like, larger town goals of having a safer sidewalk or more trees end up sort of being subverted to the desires of the individual property owner. And so it might make sense to actually, if we did that resolution about looking for pedestrian safety opportunities in the right-of-way, but maybe looking at opportunities for more green space in the public right-of-way. And so I appreciated BD's thoughtfulness.
Yeah, thank you for summarizing that. BD was not on the recording earlier because the recording wasn't working. Those are the only two. It was the third, but John was recorded. But we're going to move on to item number two, which is approval of the board meds from September 7, 2021. Does anybody on the board have any comments in those minutes and/or a motion to approve or not?
Yes, I do, but I was getting the livestream going, and so I didn't have a.
Allison's looking for her comments. Sophie, do you have any comments? Matt, do you have any comments?
Section eight is MCEED. So right now, it's listed otherwise. So it's M C E D D, I believe it's MCEED.
What does it say now?
N C E D. Just more.
Anything else, Matt?
That was it.
There was a section where it said that Allison corrected the BOD and intern's name to be from.
Noel.
Noah to Noel, but it's right in the middle of those two things. It's Noel, which is spelled N O A L.
And so it's written incorrectly, so it should reflect N O A for Noah's name.
Noel.
Noel's name.
Yeah. It's a, yeah. It's a combination between the two things that's.
All right.
I don't, I can't, I'm still pulling it up. So I don't think it was anything major.
All right. Do you have a motion to approve without that, those two changes?
So moved.
Do you have a second? All right. I wish you made the second. Any, any?
Have a long night.
Any further discussion? All's in favor? Four zero. Thank you. With that, we would like to move to, or leave Select Board Agenda and reconvene as wastewater commissioners.
Second. We would like to move, is that kind of the same as?
That's the same thing. Any discussion? All's in favor? Four zero. As wastewater commissioners, welcome, Dave. We have an approval or discussion on the main DEP Development Environmental Protection Administrative Consent Agreement and Supplemental Environmental Program with the town of Camden. Do you, do you want to lead us into that one, Dave?
Yes. That, what that's all about, you know, we've had annually sanitary sewer overflows because of rainwater, groundwater getting into the system. We've worked on it for years now. We've been slowed down by the pandemic, and just recently, DEP decided to give us a consent decree to finish our work. And so they, we've looked at what could be done to have a supplemental program. The penalty that they proposed is $25,511. But we're planning to do a supplemental environmental project with the main Coeshares Trust. And the project is about a $10,000 project. And if, as long as we meet the requirements of the consent decree and the trust does a project, we'll have a little over $15,000 forgiven. So the total fineer would be about $10,000.
Reducing the fine that we were assessed, but not completely, right?
Correct.
But the overall size of the project is $37,000, to which we're contributing 10.
Right.
Correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure that I understand.
I mean, basically, if I can summarize, this is a consent agreement in lieu of a fine, in lieu of a full fine. Because of the overflows we have had at two of our pump stations, C Street and Bayview Street, over the years, because of infiltration, and I'm sure during events, rain events has caused a lot of this overflow. So rather than paying just the fine, we're paying a modest fine of $10,000. There's a contribution from the Aldemir Farm Heritage Trust in the package, and that's where the total $37,000 comes from. And that, could you just briefly describe what that work entails at Aldemir that's we're doing in lieu of this full fine?
Yes, there's a fencing fence that will be moved away from the water. And there's plantings that will be taken out because they are invasive species. So those will be taken out, and native species will be planted in their place.
So yeah, really, it's a water quality improvement project because it's moving the cow pasture away from lily fond. But I think just as important as the supplemental environmental project is what the consent agreement obligates the town to do in terms of, you know, planning and I think a big, you know, a big thing that, you know, we've been doing are the INI surveys, which, you know, was very much held up by the pandemic, the going door-to-door and doing the inspections. So that, that work, as well as the enforcement work, will need to continue as part of this. You know, there's a number, and really important to this, and I think on page, it starts on page six, within the 240 days effective of the agreement, development and submit for review and approval, updated and complete, you know, CMOM plan. You know, the same thing with a plan and schedule to eliminate collection system, SSOs. You know, a big part of that will be the study that you already approved as wastewater commissioners to look at, you know, that specific area where we're seeing the SSO events at the C Street and Bayview Street pump stations and really kind of target where the INI is coming from. So that study will really feed into, you know, a lot of this, you know, what we're actually going to submit to, or what DEP is expecting from us in terms of actually addressing the problem and managing it into the future. So those are, you know, the more important parts of, or not more important, but very important for the town in terms of the consent agreement. And DEP was really willing to work with Dave and Wright Pierce to make sure that the timeframes were achievable to do this. So there was a lot of flexibility on that to make sure that we could come up with a plan that was actually something that we could, you know, give to them and implement on time, well, in line with the timeframe.
So I recall we discussed that this plan would be not, would be performed with the assistance of outside consulting services?
So yeah, Wright Pierce is working with Dave Bolstridge to come up with that plan.
Sophie?
So the clock is going to start ticking as soon as we agree, if we decide to accept this consent decree, right?
Well, I guess to give you a little idea of process, so we're one step in the chain, us accepting it and signing it, then it has to go to a board at DEP, and they get final say on the approval of it.
And then the clock starts ticking, the first 120 days and 240 days. So my question is, do you have enough resources to complete the work that needs to be completed within the timeframe?
Yes. You know, we anticipated this with the, with the budget. And, you know, to get things started, we've got $40,000 available. And then we have some reserve if we need it.
Just to be clear, this 240 days is develop a plan and a schedule to implement the changes that will be part of that program. Allison?
Right. And so I think the $40,000 is for the study, right? And then we also have an additional 40 or 45,000 for the GIS mapping upgrades. And some of that really kind of does fall into.
Yeah. And the GIS upgrade will be part of the CMOM.
Now, at some point, does Wright Pierce have a proposal for, you know, a scope of work and implementation strategy? And is there something that, is this already underway? Or?
Well, really, and Wright Pierce has been involved off and on. We've been doing this for years now.
Right.
You know, they're waiting for us to accept this, but, you know, we've pretty much have a plan in place. Just talking back and forth.
So I guess what I would like to see is to have, maybe have them, I know they have a lot of knowledge, but it would be great if they could come to a Select Board meeting, give us a history of sort of what has been learned in the past with some of these other studies that have been done.
Sure.
What they, you know, what are the, what do we know now? What do we not know? What do they plan on doing? You know, just kind of a broad overview of that because it's, I mean, what strikes me is I know we've been working on this, sort of chipping away at it for a long time, but from the DEP's perspective, there's really been no meaningful improvement. And I didn't know the extent of the problem until seeing the, you know, these notices from the DEP saying, hey, Camden, it's still not okay that you're dumping millions of gallons of untreated sewage into the harbor. And so I know, in speaking with them, they said, you're really great about reporting it all. And so that's part of why they know why the number is so big, but that it should be sort of on the minds of everybody in Camden, that when you see, you know, if you see a manhole that's overflowing during a rain event, you know, that should be reported to you. And I mean, we should, we should all kind of be like trying to play this game of figuring out how we can solve this problem. So I just think it would be instructive for the public and for everybody to have Wright Pierce just come and do a whole, like a formal proposal, a formal kind of plan that could be presented.
Sure, we can do that.
Other comments? Board? Matt? Nothing? Sophie, anything else?
Sorry, I was asking, I'll draw on the process question. I was asking if we needed to go to, through an RFP and we.
Go to what?
To publish a request for proposal.
No, we don't.
We don't. We don't have to, but I mean, should, there's a good argument to use Wright Pierce, but.
Well, first of all, we have to approve a plan. How we execute it is a secondary issue. Are there any other comments about the consent agreement, Allison?
So I guess I just have, so I had been aware of the overflows, but I, I don't know if I understand completely the flow violation portions of it, or the affluent parameter violations. Because, I mean, I understand that our collection system and the pump stations get overwhelmed during rain events. But I guess I was under the impression that the treatment plant overall has plenty of capacity. So when you say, when it says, you know, the flow violation's part of it, and I can turn on this so everybody can see what I'm looking at of that, but it says, you know, it seems like we're, we're going over that.
Yeah, the, what it is, we have a permit limit, average flow for the month of 1.21 million. And so those are the months that we exceeded that. Yeah. The plant has plenty of capacity. We've handled, you know, five million gallons a day instantaneously going through the plant. So, you know, there's no doubt that we have the capacity, but, you know, we're limited to 1.21 million gallons per day on a monthly average.
But why, and why, why are we limited to that if we have the capacity for more?
It's, it has to do with modeling. The pollutants that go into the harbor, they model it. They've got maximum limits for the pollutants. And, you know, the pollutants at their highest that are still allowed. Of course, your flow is going to be lower to make sure that it doesn't do any harm to the harbor.
Because, I mean, when I read things like about Rockport, for instance, in the paper, which is pretty much the only way we find out about what Rockport's planning for their wastewater system. But when they start talking about sending, you know, expanding their system and sending more to Camden, to me, that like sets off all kinds of alarm bells that I don't really know if we want more wastewater from Rockport coming into the harbor. And, but I didn't realize that it might actually be, it's actually causing us to violate our permit, it seems. And that's, that's not just one individual pump station, that's a total thing. And now why do you think that we're, this, these parameters here, it looks like it hasn't happened in a while, but why are, why are, why are we exceeding those?
Oh, as far as, you still on flow?
No, now I'm at on to like the fecal coliform or.
Which one?
Flow and violation stable on page five.
I'm on, I just, I was aware of the overflow situation for the pump stations, but I was, I do not, this I don't understand.
Yeah, what, what it is, the, we do fecal coliform tests once, one day per week. And, you know, if you're in great shape, but that last week, you happen to have a high number, it can bring your, your monthly average above the limit. As you can see there, the limit is 15, a count of 15 and 100 mils. And we exceeded it by two mils, two, two counts.
Right.
Yeah. And, you know, it's, at that point, it's too late to go back and.
Those individual, our individual dates where the, where the required permit limit for those various elements were exceeded.
Right. Yes.
Or in the case of.
What is BOD? Oh, biochemical oxygen demand.
Oxygen demand.
Yes.
What causes that to happen? Is that a problem in the treatment process or?
Here again, we only do one BOD test per, per week, in that we happen to have elevated BOD that last week. It can, it can cause that problem. The other, the other problem with the percent removal for both TSS and BOD are the high flows. Because if you're, you're coming in diluted for TSS and BOD, it's much harder to get 85% of it out.
It'll drop.
That will drop.
It diluted.
Yeah, exactly. So the flow issue will straighten those out as well.
For the most part, these permit limits, exceedances are not significant.
No, they're, they're very close to the limit. That's right. Yeah.
Are we covering right at the limit all the time? I mean, what are our norm, what are we normally?
No, no, we're, we're usually well below. And as you can see, there's not that many of them.
Yeah, there's only five, five days here.
Didn't know if it was normally, I don't know. But now, would it be possible to, in the future, whenever there is an exceedance or an overflow event, could that be sent to the Select Board or?
Sure.
That would be.
Just, we have a log. You have a log. Just, just publish that log on a quarterly basis.
Just copy us on.
Yeah, we, we, we have a monthly report we send into.
Be required to. Yeah, this copy.
It'd be good for the general public to know, too, when, if we, if millions of gallons of sewage from the Bayview Street pump station end up overflowing into the harbor, the, I think the public would appreciate a heads up. It's not a good idea to swim at any of those beaches after a rain event.
I don't want to, I'm going to say.
I know a lot of it's rainwater. A lot of it's rainwater, but still, we do know that after pretty much every rain event, it becomes unsafe to swim at our public beaches, based on the testing that we've done, after about an inch and a half.
I don't agree with that. But, because we did test all last, a year ago summer, and the only event, only days that it did was during the heavy rainstorms, and even then it didn't exceed the limits. But Sophie, you had a comment?
Yeah, I think, so I think millions of gallons of water as a number in itself does not speak to me. Because I need to know if that represents, you know, 1% of the total millions of gallons we send to their treatment plant, or, you know, what does it represent? It's hard to have just a single value for me, because it does, does not give me perspective. So is it enormous, or is it just, you know, 5% over average?
The exceedances that I read in these tables are 1.2, we're allowed to send typically the biggest exceedance has been about a quarter million.
Right.
So it's 20, 25%.
That's not, no, that's, I wouldn't see that the flow violations are, that's not our, our big issue. And I wouldn't think that that's the issue that the DEP is emphasizing the most at all. That what they're most upset about is the amount of just complete bypass, the stuff that never makes it to the treatment plant because the pump stations become overwhelmed.
Correct.
You know, and, you know, it is diluted greatly, but it's still, you know, untreated wastewater, and that's, that's the issue.
That's correct.
But every hotel that's flushing their toilet in the, when, when we're having these events is, that's right down in that, actually in a pretty large area, is going into the harbor. I mean, we shouldn't sugarcoat it too much.
It's still, it's still raw sewage, I think.
But only for a short amount of time.
Yes.
Anyway, back to the consent agreement. Are there any other comments on the consent agreement? Are there any other comments on the consent agreement?
No.
Motion to accept.
I move that we accept the consent agreement sent by the DEP.
Second.
Motion made in second, to further discussion. All's in favor. 4-0. We'll look forward to seeing the plan because that's the biggest nut in this whole thing. And we agree. You're, you're tired of dealing with this the sort of way.
Yes.
We need to focus on an effective plan with all the information we have on INI, with all the information we need to implement. And hopefully, this, this comprehensive study will bring us to, and you, all of us, to a point of saying, hey, we, we know what's causing it. We want to stop it.
Yeah, we've been slowed down the last couple of years because of the pandemic.
Understood.
And it's been frustrating. So, yeah.
Thank you, Dave.
We'll get it done.
Start digging up the roads.
Start, start doing stuff.
People will love that.
With that, I'd like to adjourn as wastewater commissioners and reconvene as select board.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion made in second. All's, all's in favor. 4-0. Thank you very much. Now we're going to, can we get back to the agenda? We went back to our approvals. We have a, a number. The first of which is the, well, we have the final draft of the approval of the town meeting warrant, with all the names spelled correctly, for, for the November 2nd ballot. It's in our packet. All of those, each of the items that the select board has responsibility for have been approved by the select board. There is one, which is the charter commission, which is on the warrant, obviously. And, and I know in our packet and soon on the website, there'll be the revised charter and all the information. But there is a letter that was drafted by the charter commission. And Deb, before we just approve this warrant, would you like to address that, please?
Sure. I have one question.
Next.
I'm Deb Dodge, and I'm chair of the charter commission. And with me tonight is Lowry Sargent, our vice chair, Mark Haskell, and John French. Actually, the letter that you referred to is called "The Final Report of the Charter Commission to the Town of Camden." And that's an official part of the charter. It is Article 11. But it is one of the things that is required by a charter commission to present to the select board that then triggers the revisions to the charter going on a ballot. So because we have people that are viewing it on YouTube and this gets recorded, for the benefit of those people, I would like to read the final report. It's not terribly long, so I won't take that much time. But I think it's important for the people listening and who may be looking at YouTube later to be able to hear the final report.
Okay.
Final report of the charter commission to the town of Camden. On June 11, 2019, the town of Camden voted to form a new charter commission. Three members were appointed by the select board and six were elected by the citizens of Camden. After their organizational meeting in August, the commission began work in September. The commission included members with town government experience, former members of the select board, planning board, zoning board of appeals, personnel board, comprehensive plan committee, conservation commission, and the 1979 charter commission, and current members of the budget committee. Their work continued throughout 2021. And the final report in full draft of the revised charter was presented to the select board on September 21, 2021 for inclusion on the November 21st ballot. Because that's in past tense is because this is going in, in the charter. And you can't, you wouldn't say will be presented.
Understood.
In spite of the breadth of experience, the commission struggled a bit in the beginning on how to approach a charter that had not been fully revised or reviewed in 40 years. We realized it required modernization, bringing it up to date and in compliance with current main statutes and references. The format needed to be more accessible and various duties scattered throughout the charter needed consolidation. The first thing we studied was our form of government, our current town meeting, select board, town manager model versus a hybrid model with a town council that shares legislative authority with the voters on town meeting. We reviewed charters from other towns, communicated with various town managers within Maine. Although some select board members expressed an interest in a hybrid modeled form of government, we received no comments from citizens during our public hearings in July and August or 2021 or via the commission's email account. The commission concluded that our current form of government is still appropriate and currently meets the needs of its citizens. As the work progressed, we considered how to bring the charter in line with current practices of administration of the town. There are some changes that warrant particular attention, such as changes to the structure of the budget committee, streamlining the nomination process and reducing the number. We added a new section on the management of endowment funds and gifts, and these both appear in Article 6. We added a new article on growth and long-range planning as Article 7. We transitioned the personnel board to an advisory personnel committee. We also realized that we needed to provide a process to make sure another 40 years did not go by before revisiting the charter, and this was added to Article 2. The changes to the budget committee and personnel board do not in any way diminish the value and need for the work done by both. They simply reflect current, certain current realities. When the charter commission of 1979 established the personnel board, they noted that there was a need to set standards for qualifications and performance. Since then, the town has adopted a complete personnel policy manual to establish, quote, "uniform, equitable, and efficient system of personnel administration," unquote. And that's in Personnel Policy, Town of Camden, Maine, page 1. The work of the personnel board has since evolved into one with advisory responsibilities. The current personnel board has drafted a new statement of responsibilities that the commission recommends the select board adopt to form the new personnel committee. To transition, currently elected members of the personnel board shall serve until their terms are up and then are eligible to be appointed by the select board to the personnel committee. Recent history has shown that finding citizens to serve on a budget nominating committee has been problematic with many years with an insufficient number of candidates nominated at town meeting. Equally difficult has been the task of filling 21 to 25 seats on the budget committee. An analysis of other town meeting towns revealed that Camden is the only town with such a large committee and that most budget committees are appointed by select boards. We are retaining the election of committee members, but reduce the number to 11, a number still higher than most towns. Instead of a nominating committee, prospective budget committee members shall fill out a committee interest form in order for their name to be placed on the ballot. Due to restrictions on in-person meetings during the COVID-19 emergency, the town was unable to hold the open town meetings in June of 2020 and 21. The citizens voted on the town's budget by secret ballot instead of by a show of hands at the open town meetings. That raised the issue of whether voting by secret ballot was a preferable way for the citizens to approve the annual budget. The commission has not recommended that change the method of voting in this proposed revision, but rather recommended the select board include on the November 2021 warrant, a non-binding article to gauge the voters' interest in making such a change. While the results of the non-binding article do not mandate any action, it will be a good indication of whether the charter should be revised in the future to allow the change. COVID concerns did disrupt the commission's work in 2020 and 2021, delaying presentation of a working draft to the public until the summer of '21. Two public hearings were held in the French conference room on July 21 and August 18, 2021, in addition to creating an email address to receive feedback and answer any questions or concerns from citizens. We received very helpful editing suggestions, comments on some of the proposed revisions, but no requests for substantive changes in Camden's form of government. It should be noted that all commission meetings were open to the public and announced on the town calendar and available for viewing on YouTube. The revision of the town charter is the result of the commission's meetings, public hearings, research into the charters of other towns, communications with the town manager, Audrey Kaler, the select board, finance director, Jody Hanson, members of the budget committee and personnel board, former town manager, Roger Moody, and town attorney, Bill Kelly. Mr. Kelly has participated in numerous meetings as well as reviewed revisions to the charter as it progressed. The commission believes this newly revised charter provides a solid foundation for the town moving forward. The commission would like to extend special thanks to Assistant Town Manager Janice Essency for invaluable administrative support, which probably should have about 10 exclamation points behind that statement. Respectfully submitted, Deb Dodge, chairperson, Lowry Sargent, vice chair, Nancy Cottle Johnson, John French, Karen Grove, Mark Haskell, Jim Hurd, Bob Oxton, and Jean White. I would like to add that we have booked, reserved the French conference room on October the 13th here at 5:45 in order to have an open meeting. If there are any citizens that want to come in and have questions answered about the charter, the charter will be out there and available for people to see on the town website, as well as the copies in the town office and copies in the public library. But we've reserved the conference room in order if people want to come down in person and ask some questions if they've read it or seen it on the website. There won't be any changes made after because the final draft is what has been presented. But we want people to have the opportunity to ask questions if they would like. So we've done that for October.
What time was that again, Deb?
5:45, our favorite time here in the French conference room.
Nice round number. Okay, thank you.
It's consistent, anyway, for us. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. And this information, well, the charter is also drafted, is in here. Audrey, where will that be posted? Just give the public an idea of where that's going to be found for reference.
So after tonight, I'll create like a news update item so it's easily found on the front page of the website. That'll have, you know, a link to the, the proposed version of the charter as well as the letter by the group and their highlights of changes. So everything that's in your packet will be on that news item on the website.
So you'll include the new highlights that I sent to Jazz? Because that's sort of an outline form of what the changes are. Is that in your packet? Did you get that? Oh, great. I didn't realize that was included.
There are three items in the packet. There's your, the letter you just read. There's the highlights. And then there's the actual charter language, which is lots of pages long. Okay, good.
About 32.
32?
But who's counting?
Lowry?
We're also finalizing the preparation of a press release that will go in a pilot in Village Soup that basically says this is what's going on. And it will have the web address of what you, what you create. So if a citizen reads that and says, jeez, I'd like to learn more, they can go right to the web address and go there to be able to read the whole thing. It's, it's a long time, unfortunately, between now and when ballots are cast because of the nature of the steps we have to go through. So we thought it would be very helpful, especially because there's not too many people here who remember voting 40 years ago.
Probably.
Yeah, it slipped my memory. If I voted, I don't recall, you know. But I, so I think that whatever we can do to provide information between now and then, because it is an unusual thing, would be helpful for the citizens in making their decisions.
A lot of people vote absentee. And so all those ballots are going out the beginning of October. So, you know, this is really good, good timing between when, you know, you're presenting your findings, you're having your meeting. All the information's going to be posted on the website and in the papers so that everyone's prepared when they get their absentee ballots.
Good turnout. It'll be, it'll be interesting to see now that COVID is a little bit more on the wane, how many people show up to vote in person as opposed to doing it. We don't, we'll find out when it's over.
Well, there's the convenience of absentee. And absentee was relatively low in June. But June's always a non-state mandate kind of an election, a ballot. November's going to have quite a bit.
Elections, absentee voting is far eclipsed in-person voting.
Aye, aye. Getting very, very popular in all states. Thank you very much. With that, I'd like to move to approve the town meeting warrant for the November ballot.
I'll second for the purpose of discussion.
Motion made in second, discussion.
Sophie, your hand first.
I just have a question. I read the warrant, and Article 4 doesn't have a recommendation.
Which one?
Article 4. All of their articles-
Which, which is which one?
Article 4 is the-
Shall the town approve the charter revision dated September 13?
That is correct, because it's not within our purview to approve it.
It's not within, so there's no select board recommendation on this one?
Okay, that's not within your purview. It's actually the main statute that once the report is presented, it's put on the warrant.
That's, that's why I said that the, the recommendations that we are allowed to make are in this document.
Thank you for the clarification.
So it seems, I bet there will be others that have that question too. Is it possible, is there any way to put that just, you know, in the most neutral of ways to say that's, you know, it's not within? Because also, the next thing we're about to do is we're about to approve the warrant. And I'm confused as to what authority we have to do that.
I have a recommendation. I just thought of it. You could put there, under Article 4, charter commission in the notes. Charter commission recommends a passage of this unanimously, 8-0. There was only one absent in our last meeting. You could put, the charter commission recommends 8-0. Or wherever the absent goes. 8 is the absence at the end or the 8-1, 8-1-0. You could do that, even though the select board can't do the recommendation because that's not part of your purview. But you could put what the charter commission vote was to put it on the article, and that was unanimous.
That's correct. And I think Bill would, I think Bill would be okay with that. We talked about this.
You can ask him.
Because he is with all the other recommendations.
Good point.
I mean, I do think that, I'm also a little confused about the, the unanimous recommendation because, I mean, I got a call this week from, like, secondhand from somebody who was very upset about the charter vote going forward because they had talked to a charter commission member. I'm imagining that's maybe the person that was absent and-
No, the person, perhaps I may know who you were talking about, voted.
In support.
In support.
Okay.
That's so confusing.
Well, it was 8-0. You can check them.
Oh, no, I'm not. I'm just...
Audra, can we add that to this Article 4? Our Charter Commission recommends 8-0.
I'm not sure if that really... Well, maybe if we could settle the question of, why are we able to approve the warrant? Like, what's the mechanism where here we are approving the warrant in total?
It's almost exactly like when they're, the school district...
Exactly.
Sorry.
It's the same thing as a school warrant.
Exactly. You approve it on a school...
If you don't approve it on a...
You're not remending it.
We're just putting it...
Putting it on the warrant.
You're putting it on the ballot.
It's kind of, it's written, there's like a very specific process and statute for the formation of a Charter Commission and the work that they can do.
With that, I understand.
It's fairly stated in that statute that the Select Board has no authority to reject or accept the recommendations of a Charter Commission, because they're their own group with separate authority. So the Select Board, all you have, really, your responsibility is putting it on the warrant and accepting the warrant.
And that's what we're doing.
And that's what I, I guess that is what I'm asking for, that the note would say that, because...
What note?
Something anywhere that it would...
We can...
We're confusing this.
It's confusing for everybody who ever votes, and people will be confused, and so...
It's never happened in the past. As Audra pointed out, the school budget comes every year. We may not agree with the amount, but it would have to go to the ballot. And it does not say in the bottom that the Select Board don't agree or anything else, because that's creating a biased statement. It really is. You're an elected body.
I'm not asking to put that. I'm not asking.
We are asking to put in some comment.
No, I'm not.
It certainly sounds it.
That's what I heard.
To say that it's outside of the purview of the, that it's, that the, just to make it clear that the Charter Commission is its own...
So it's clear the school board's its own, but you don't put a wording in there saying to that.
The school board's articles aren't mixed in with ours.
Yes, they are, just same way as this. It comes through the town for approval for a June town meeting, and you have to put it, it's on the warrant, and you vote every year to put it on there.
It's on a separate piece of paper, and they do their...
But it's still included as a package to the warrant.
I'm actually not making as much of a statement as you think I am. I don't, I'm not trying to get it in here that the Select Board somehow doesn't agree. This is not a major concern.
Right. You can agree, disagree, agree, for all you want, because you're a citizen of the Town of Camden. I, you know, whatever your opinion is, but...
Not, that's, I'm not...
Not saying that.
It's not about that. It's about the fact that every, that every single time that there's ever an election, people are, ask me lots of questions about every aspect of it. People just get confused, and I do this every time with this... Usually when we vote on something, I ask why we're voting on it. And there are other things on this, for instance, that I object to, the way that they're worded, the way that the town has worded things. Not the Charter Commission. So the next thing I'm going to get into is I would vote against the warrant because of the way that the open space zoning note is worded, because I think it's going to be confusing to people. I think people are going to be left with a misunderstanding.
They already approved it. They already approved it in the previous meeting.
Note. So there's a difference between recommending something, or you might recommend that something is, goes, be approved, but disagree with the way that it's being explained to voters. So this one says, these changes are intended to provide for new opportunities to create additional housing in town. They do not provide for any increase in the overall total of dwelling units permitted under the current ordinance. I believe that people are going to read that and believe that nothing that, in Article 3, is going to allow an increase in total dwelling units, and that that is not the case. And so that's why I disagree. That's why I would vote against...
Was that note in the article we approved last time?
We approved the articles. We didn't approve the notes.
Okay. So we can, we can affect something like that at this meeting. We could probably just change that to say, create additional housing in town, period, and that's it.
It should be really simple, you know, broad and...
Get rid of the second clause.
I just put a period there and stop going on and on and on.
And get the, even the, and more affordable open space development, I think gets, it's just a little too loaded, applying updated planning strategies. Like, oh, updated is good. I just, I think it's, it's too much for a few reasons.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
You can't change stuff now. You've already been through public hearings on this. You can't change the language, correct?
I don't think this note was on the...
The notes, yeah.
The article, this note was not on...
The chapter after.
Yeah, we could change the note, I believe, because that was not on the, we approved all articles except Article 4, because we don't get to approve that one, which is a charter. But I believe we only approved the bolded, non-italicized. This note wasn't on it. So I think this is fine-tuning the language of the note. It's not changing what we already voted on in a previous meeting. We can definitely change that. It is, I agree. I think it's a little bit, it's trying to reach too far. It's subdivided by applying updated planning strategies developed to, to, I don't know, to keep some simple statement to provide more housing, more housing opportunities.
The purpose of this is to create more housing opportunities in Camden.
Done, done.
And if they want to know the details, they can look into it.
I agree. We made it, we're making it to, Audra, let's fine-tune this so you get it right, because this is the last night.
I just want to confirm.
We didn't vote on it.
Well, either, either way.
I just think it should be one sentence, and not go into this providing for, you know, additional housing, for an increase in overall quantity. We have no idea what its impact may do. There's always a possibility you could have a knee-jerk reaction to this ordinance change. There's a possibility of that negatively, but, which we would address. But this should just talk about one sentence, applying updated planning strategy developed to provide more efficient housing development, or more efficient...
I just think the purpose of the amendments is to revise the standards for some rural subdivisions in order to create more housing opportunities in Camden.
Thank you, thank you, John. Thank you so much.
You said that you're going to put this...
Yeah.
Stuff like this.
We don't have a choice.
I'll even put a lawn sign up, John.
Child, thank you very much. Good to see you all.
Thank you.
Take care. Audra, can you reiterate what you think we said?
You just approved the ordinance amendments that'll be sent. You didn't approve the actual language, the warrant articles themselves, the way they're worded, or the note.
Okay. So this note we're going to change.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And just, Allison, would you repeat it for Audra's benefit, please?
I would propose that it be changed, too. The purpose of the amendments is to revise the standards for some rural subdivisions in order to create more housing opportunities in Camden.
Period.
Done. Excellent.
Yeah.
Let's make sure Audra gets it, because we don't have a second chance here.
On the, on explaining why we can propose, why we can recommend Article 4, can we put on a Q and A on the webpage?
I can't hear you.
Can we have a Q and A section on the webpage? Question and answer, sorry.
Or FAQ?
Or a frequently asked question section, where we can say, why isn't Article 4 recommended? Because the, because the select board can't do it.
That's fine.
So it's not on the warrant, but it's, people can find information.
Absolutely, absolutely. That's fine. We can do that, no question. Audra, did you get the language?
Okay, so the purpose of the amendment is to revise the standards for some rural subdivisions to create more housing opportunities in Camden.
Very.
Done.
All right. Any other comments to notes?
Every so often, I can be brief.
You're good.
Article 5, note. I read that. I didn't have a problem with that one.
Oh, Article 5.
Yeah, that's the, that's the, the line in Morse property. That's, that's the lines that go for, you know, the new circulation system from C Street down Atlantic to...
Circulation system. Yeah, I mean, yeah, I didn't have...
I don't have any comment, because it's as technical.
That's fine.
It's descriptive.
It's, yeah, it is what it is. It's a confusing thing that is confusingly worded, and if people want to learn more, they can't.
Any comment on the note on non-binding resolution?
Do Mr....
No, we commented, we, I'm sorry.
We commented on that extensively.
We did, we did. We paper-balanced in there, that's true. So the principal change we have is to Article 3 note per that statement Audra just made. So with that, we have a motion to, and we already had a motion second.
This is discussion.
I think it'd be better to leave that the whole Charter Commission recommends blah, blah, blah. I think just leave that off. We're not going to put that on, right?
Which one?
I don't think we should include...
That's all your decision, so...
Just like the one small...
You direct me not to do that, I will...
What, directing what?
I think we should take the explanatory thing if...
If you just think it's fine how it is, then we'll leave it how it is.
I think it's fine as, I think it's...
I don't think it's fine how it is, but I do not think it is improved by adding the 8 to 0 thing for the Charter Commission, because it's just...
I thought that was your suggestion.
No, no, I wanted it to say that the Select Board has no authority to recommend or not recommend anything the Charter Commission does.
We're not putting it on Article 3.
Right, I know.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine. So we can put that frequently asked question on the website.
Yep.
But any other changes to this document besides Article 3, then? A motion made, seconded, for other discussion. All those in favor of the, of the, of the motion?
Are we, yeah, motion to approve the warrant, right?
The warrant, I'm sorry.
With a revised, Allison's revised.
There's one change to that note.
Where does this go?
Goes to the ballot.
It's like whether we...
3, you were against. You didn't vote.
I know. I'm, it's the same thing I do every time. I get a little paralyzed when we vote and we have no authority, and I just, I'm like, ah. But I guess...
We have authority.
We have authority.
No.
Yeah, you can. Yeah, you can. It's still going to go on the ballot.
What if we all voted no?
It wouldn't go on the ballot, and it wouldn't be anything on the ballot, except the Charter Commission. We can't stop that.
It's left now, so the only one, you know, David's the only one here.
I'm voting, I'm voting yes, whatever.
Okay, 4-0. Thank you very much. Audra, have a drink.
March back to just make sure.
I'm not the one that needs one right now.
All right. Item 2 was a per...
Who is, Audra? Tell us.
I don't, I don't know.
Is it me or Bob?
All the, all the above. We need to go on to, second item, confirm the designation, the registrar of voters' office is ours for upcoming November 2nd special town meeting, the ballot. By the way, just, you understand the reason for this? It's because we don't specify this, we have to wind up with staff working overtime, and that's why we have this. I need a motion to accept that confirmation.
Motion to accept the confirmation of the registrar hours?
Office hours.
Office hours.
That is acceptable, and I would second that.
Discussion?
This is somehow going to prevent them from having to work overtime?
Yes.
How?
Because we just made...
We could force them to stay, the voters could force them to stay longer unless we set the hours.
If we don't, if we don't specify by state statute, then they can, they can, have to work beyond office hours. We've done, we've done this every time for the last 50 years, and there's no reason to change it now, right? Is that correct, what I just said?
That's the spirit. Cut on the wall.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor? 4-0. Confirmation of the town clerk's appointment of Peter Gross as election warden for the special town meeting, the ballot, to be held in November 2nd, 2020. Has been Peter Gross, or you talked to...
I know. I don't think we have any authority to change this either, so we might as well.
All right, have a motion.
Is there ever any discussion about this?
That's why I'm glad to have it, because I don't know who Peter Gross is, so I can't wait. But, but yes, would you like, we could put a motion to...
To discuss.
Yep, go ahead, go ahead, move.
I make a motion to discuss the election warden memo.
I have a second. Motion made, seconded. Discussion.
Peter Gross.
Who is Peter Gross?
Who's Peter Gross?
Peter Gross is Ken's brother, not Ken.
Yeah, Ken.
Irrelevant to this. How, how is this position selected?
Oh, I know who Gross is. I know. Is Margie Gross's...
Yes, they're all, they are all related.
Election warden has the responsibility of opening the polls in the morning.
Okay.
And closing the polls.
And closing, and announcing the results, or closing the polls and then announcing the results.
Right.
And it's just been a voluntary position in Camden for a long time, and...
There's no process.
I'm not certain who was the election warden prior to Peter Gross, but Peter's been...
It was Dave Morrison.
No, he's different. He's the moderator.
Oh, the moderator, okay.
Yep. There's, there's always a, he deputizes a deputy election warden, and that's typically Beth Ward, so...
Why would we have a town staff person be doing that?
Well, it's the same reason why we have town staff people working as ballot clerks and...
Yeah, in the polls that day at the fire station.
Yeah, I mean, it's really about sort of availability of...
Personnel.
Yeah. I mean, I don't have any actual problem with the way things are going, but it would be nice to let more people, I mean, at some point to follow some kind of a process whereby the position is competitive. I don't imagine there's a...
Well, it's volunteer. If anybody wants to volunteer for it, they should approach the town and volunteer to be the warden.
We don't have a lot of people there.
I wouldn't think so.
But people don't know. You have to ask them.
No.
Does this person decide what, like, the policies about where tables can be and things like that? Who decides that?
That's the clerk.
Yeah.
Because they, the clerk is in charge of the elections. They have overall responsibility and authority for how, yes.
Right.
But the election warden, they, it's just a, it's a...
It's kind of a...
...a different error, and, you know, that was something that was really important to sort of officially open and close the polls and announce results and...
Exactly.
Because you don't want to, you don't want to have somebody paid by the town to do this because they, because they're paid by the town. So you want to have an independent person...
Wouldn't be smart.
Then Beth Ward shouldn't be the deputy.
Well, I mean, there are...
By that logic, I'm not saying...
Like, we've had, we've had Elaine as our registrar of voters for a long, long, long time. Like, she started doing it before Katrina was the clerk, and that's pretty unique. Most communities that have, like, an administrative staff like we have, their registrar of voters is a staff person.
Right.
And when Elaine no longer wants to do it, it makes the most sense for that person to continue being a staff person, because people are registering to vote, not just on the day of the election, of the election, but throughout the entire year.
Right.
So, I mean, it's just one of those things. And Elaine is wonderful. She's always willing to pretty much drop everything. She works really, really hard during the election season.
Yep.
But, you know, when she's not there to do it anymore, or she decides she doesn't want to do it anymore, it's just going to make more sense for a town staff person to do it.
Right, they know what they're doing now.
These are just all things that were prescribed to do by law. Some of them still make sense, given the area, era that we live in, and some of them are, you know, just kind of like a traditional, this is...
A little bit traditional.
...officially how you run an election, so, yeah, it's...
All right.
All right, we have the...
I make a motion to approve...
You know, gross. We already did.
You already did.
The memos...
Already did.
Already did? Oh, I did this for, okay.
I thought we just did it for discussion.
Oh, she already made a motion.
Another, another important part of what the election warden does, if there are any sort of issues at the polls...
Yep.
They're sort of responsible for...
Decisions.
Decisions around how those issues are to be managed.
Which can be very important at times.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not saying this is incredibly, like, Camden is a hotspot of, like, you know, protesters or people showing up and being unruly at the polls, luckily, but in some places that is an issue.
Absolutely.
And the position of election warden, they really have a huge level of responsibility.
We have a motion and second, discussion. All those in favor? Four zero. Thank you very much. And next, we have, well, this is, let's see, oh, yeah, this is the totally different from elect, we're off elections. We're on to authorize the town manager to, to sign the amended agreement between the town and emperors or the main public employees retirement system to allow non-participating employees who have been employed for five years or more to join the retirement system. Audra?
So to explain this, when we hire a new employee in the town of Camden, they're given a choice of retirement plans. They can sign up for main pirs or ICMA. And, you know, some elect to not...
Oop, some elect not to choose a retirement plan at all. So if you're, in the past, if you were somebody who maybe chose a different retirement plan or chose not to sign up for a retirement plan, that was it. You lost your chance to join the main pir system unless you moved to another public sector employee.
Right.
A perfect example of this is our friend sitting in the audience, Dave St. Laurent, who, he became a member of, you know, the, he became an employee of the city of Rockland, and he elected not to sign up for main pirs. And, you know, a few years into it, realized that it would be more advantageous for him to be part of that system than the system that he elected to be part of.
I see.
And he found out at that point, there's no way he can join main pirs. He lost his one opportunity when he first, you know, signed up as an employee with the city of Rockland and had to make that decision. And I can tell you, it's, we don't always have the most detailed information or analysis on, you know, what is going, like, we really put it on employees to do their research when they're picking their benefits programs. And that can be very difficult if you're starting a new job. There's a lot of decisions to make about that sort of thing. So, you know, a few people over the years have missed out, and it's really a pretty arbitrary rule that main pirs had, that, you know, thou shalt not ever have an opportunity again unless you switch positions. So I think that over the years, enough people like Dave St. Laurent have written them letters expressing their, you know, dissatisfaction with that rule, that they've decided to change it. And so the process of changing it is that the governing body of the municipality, which is the select board in our case, if they elect to allow employees who have maybe made the choice not to join the system at the beginning of their employment, but have been employed for five years with the town, to re-up, to be part of the system.
They have a time limit in which to do so, correct?
Yes. Yep.
It's like open enrollment, basically.
Open, if, yeah, during the open enrollment period.
Open enrollment.
Yep.
Okay.
Which is November, I think, or something. I forget the date was.
Yeah.
Any other questions before we have a motion to approve?
Excellent. Thank you. It was an excellent explanation.
Yeah, Dave can tell you more about it than I can.
I can see.
I make a motion to approve the change in the main pirs.
amended?
I make a motion to approve the proposal that Jody Hanson can accept the changes in enrollment to main pirs.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Alls in favor?
Absolutely.
Four zero. That's great opportunity. Thank you. Even, even it does help, Dave.
I don't think it helps him now.
Not yet. Not yet.
Lesson, lesson learned when he switched to the town of Camden.
Approval to authorize the town manager to create a reserve account in our budget for the receipt of the first drawdown of the American Rescue Plan Act funds, which I believe is about quarter million dollars?
It's about a quarter of a million.
Okay. So this is just establishing a separate account to hold those funds, a placeholder in our, in our budgetary system for future deliberation on what we will or won't do with those funds.
Correct. And it's more, I think a better way of describing this would be a ratification, because we've already, we've already created a reserve account and we've received the funds.
Okay.
Because this was, this was treated very much like a block grant from the state where they passed the money through from the federal government. And, you know, there was a, a date by which they were issuing the drawdowns, and we wanted to make sure that we didn't miss anything. So we came in as quickly as we could.
Do I have a motion to ratify this reserve account?
I make a motion to ratify this reserve account.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Alls in favor? Four zero. Thank you. Next is to authorize up to $23,000 from contingency funds to be spent on the replacement of routers in all town buildings. Audra?
Yes. So we, in, in all the town buildings, from the Opera House, Town Hall, to Snowbowl, wastewater treatment plant, public safety building, Department of Public Works, we have routers that, they really don't help us fulfill our cyber liability insurance requirements in terms of the 30-day retention activity logs. And also, you know, given the different sort of threats that we're seeing, they're kind of at the, the end of the technology, just, it's, it's at a point now where we need to upgrade what we're doing so we have better protection. So that's, basically, this proposal is to replace those routers and update them with something that's going to keep us more secure across all of our, our facilities.
Mm-hmm.
And fulfill that requirement for our insurance. And given that, you know, the discussion we had during the budget development process around, you know, IT and the use of the reserve, it just seemed appropriate that we used contingency for this particular expense.
So this change per your memo will, these new routers will allow the town to fulfill our cyber liability insurance requirements, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And you're saying up to 23,000 because...
Just, you know, the cost of the equipment, the installation, you know, all, all those sort of variables.
Have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the use of contingency fund of 23,000 dollars to cover the cost of routers.
Second.
Second, Allison. Thank you. Any discussion?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes. So I would like to see that type of expenses. So there's a life, there's a life cycles to these routers, and it's pretty predictable. And we need to start making sure that this type of equipment goes back into the budget and not in contingency funds or reserves, because it's good practice to make sure that we have equipment up to date. So I'm okay for this time, but I really do think it needs to go back to the budget in future years. And we, we need to have an aging process for all the equipment we have in town, so that it doesn't come up as a, as a surprise that, ooh, the routers are all down. So that, that would be my recommendation.
Okay. Any comments? Discussion? Allison?
I mean, I think for, that makes sense in some ways, but that, for a lot of things, we truly don't, you know, can we say right now when, you know, what the lifespan of these routers is going to be and...
Yeah. I mean, again, you're buying something called Total Protection, which is a three-year cycle. And then they will be cycled out after three years. And to the credit of Harbor Digital and Ben, they have been quite straightforward in terms of what this product is, what its life cycle is, and what you'll need to do in three years.
Did the obsolescence, the obsolescence...
Yeah, you basically, again, these are off the shelf. And so you basically cycle them out. I mean, that's just the way it works.
The obsolescence is built into this type of equipment. So we know exactly, you know, well, not exactly, but we know they're going to fail in three years. Or won't be sufficient in three years, won't, won't be supporting the kind of traffic we'll have in three years.
Exactly.
So, so it's, it's perfectly predictable.
I witnessed that with...
I mean, because the, we've been sort of getting by with the ones that we've had. I just didn't realize we're signing up for, it'll be another 20, however many thousand dollars in three years. And all these are going to be thrown in the trash and getting on board with, planned obsolescence is usually considered a bad thing. But, I mean, sure, I'm not going to sit here and argue about routers. It's not my area of expertise. But that's too bad. That's going to be a big expense to...
Yeah, it is going to, the price is going to go up. But I think it, I experienced that at home with routers from my supplier. It, they don't only last so long because technology involved. But you're right, it's probably going to be 30,000 in three years.
And I would say to your point, Sophie, we do have, we do have that plan for all of our IT equipment. It was just a matter of the way the budget discussion went. I didn't think I was going to get, I mean, just during the operational IT portion, there wasn't any support for increasing that amount. And so I thought for doing a project like this, there certainly wouldn't be.
And luckily, we thought far enough forward to have contingency sufficient to handle these things that may come up.
Well, that was the, that was the reason why, because the budget committee was, they wanted to spend contingency on IT stuff in 2020 and, or sorry, 2021. So in 2022, I didn't budget for it. I...
Understood.
Yes.
And historically, we have to keep in mind that this town was very paper-based and non-digital, not, like, technology has been like a negative word. It was, we've been battling slowly just to get YouTube and, like, all of these things. And so the budget, by default, has been very...
Looks like it's ballooned, but really...
Right. I mean, it just, they just haven't been spending, you know, money on any of these things. OneDrive, the town assessing database, GIS.
Makes sense with that. Any further discussion?
No.
Not hearing any. All those in favor? Four zero. Thank you all. And the last item on our actions list is the, let me get to it, is the, to authorize up to $45,000 from the Stormwater Reserve account for cleaning all stormwater catch basins. Dave, you going to address this one? Just everybody while Dave, coming up, we have, we do have in our packet a quote from an entity of, oh, just over 40,000 to do that scope of work, correct, Dave?
That's correct. And we got more than one quote. So I want to just back up for a second and say, that wasn't the only reason I came to this place either, the retirement. It was part of a bigger decision, and I don't regret it for a minute. It's been a real pleasurable experience working with all of you. So, actually, my boss.
Not, not just main pirs.
Right. Just want to, right. Right. So...
Politician.
So I guess I'll talk a little bit about our stormwater collection system. So with any good, well, the stormwater collection system is one of our most important infrastructure components we have in the town. And with any good stormwater operating plan, you have a best management practice that goes along with it. And that includes the cleaning of catch basins, which this is, this request is asking to do. So we have a total of 718 catch basins in the town that we, if you recall, about two years ago, part of my budget presentation, I talked about how I was going to try to map and accurately locate all of the catch basins in town with the goal of connecting them, identifying the attributes, and then tying them into the whole, the whole watershed system so that we had an understanding of how we could plan for future development and pollution control. And we did that, and we mapped out all of our stormwater collection system. And then our next steps were to define all the attributes, all of the things, how, how each catch basin was put together, what it consisted of, the pipe sizes and all those things. And as we did that, we started realizing that a lot of them were full of sediment. And cleaning, the definition of cleaning a catch basin is when it gets a third full, from the bottom of the catch basin to the bottom of the, the pipe, it should be cleaned. And we're talking, these are filled right to the top, some of them.
Wow.
So the reason why cleaning catch basin is important, or I'll talk quickly about how a catch basin works. So a catch basin is kind of a pollution control device. And it's just, it's just a, a box or a round cylindrical concrete structure, could made out, be made out of fiberglass. A pipe comes in, a grate collects water into the system, and it's a sump. And what happens is the solids will settle out to the bottom, which is where the debris is, is marked, is identified on this illustration. And then a lot of times, some of the floating things will, floating debris or wastes will stay floating on the top. So when these are working correctly, they limit the amount of pollution that can enter into the ecosystem or into the river or into the ocean. So it's important that we maintain these for the one, for that one reason. So to limit and reduce pollution entering the river and the ocean, to prevent flooding from intense rainfall events as well as snowmelt. That's another really important reason to keep these operational. Without these working properly, we have flooding of people's property. So once we have these all cleaned out, they'll help us also identify any defects or problems with these. So part of this cleaning is taking the GIS system that we've developed and inputting all of the findings of each cleaning. So they'll say, okay, it was half full, the pipe was broken, the grate was bad. And then we get a report, and I can quickly query that and find all the defects within the system. And then I can better plan for stormwater infrastructure improvements that are associated with roadwork. So we tie those together.
Go ahead.
Okay. And then probably, you know, planning for, planning for future cleaning and budgeting is another reason why we want to do this. So we want to start with a fresh slate. We want to clean the whole system out. And then we'll do an inventory of them in the springtime and see where they are in terms of fullness.
Right.
And then also look at all of the data collected, see what needs to be repaired. So this is kind of a fresh start. And it ties into our access system that we have online. And I think it's money well spent. And then we really don't not want to do this, I don't think. I think this is a really important thing to do. It should be done every year, and we should keep up with it.
If this program is, per the quote is, to be completed by July of next year?
That's correct. So we're probably, if, if this is authorized, we'll start next week. And we'll have probably around 300 of them done. And then the rest will be done in the springtime. And this is a huge undertaking. We, we've been doing these in the past, but we just weren't doing enough of them to kind of keep up with what was happening.
Sure. Will there be any evaluation or analysis of the, of the sediment in the catch basins?
No. That isn't a requirement.
It's not?
No. It is an requirement. Our municipality can collect the sediment.
Yeah, it's more from a, Dave, more of a perspective of exaggerating to make a point. It's 90% leaves, you know, leaves that have rotted out or just normal sediment versus any abnormal, any potential abnormalities you would visually see.
That's a, that's a good observation and comment, Bob, because, you know, we may find that several locations have litter in them. So that means that maybe we have a litter problem in the area and not enough trash cans. But, you know, you may see others that have a huge amount of sediment. And that might be an indication of over-treatment of, you know, sand in the wintertime.
Yep.
So that helps you evaluate the whole picture.
That's what I meant. Not a, not an analysis. Go ahead, Allison.
There, in the, the app that was designed, though, there is, so the person that's going to do the work, if I understand correctly, is actually going to be using the app. And one of the, one of the things to fill out is whether there's anything like atypical, like any unusual odors or grease or, so that, I mean, it would, it is going to help us identify things like, for example, this is one we looked in today. And it's some kind of like grease or something. So that would have gotten, we would have expected that he would write that down, like, there was a strange...
Should be annotated. So you plan, as I heard, you plan this to be in the annual budget?
Yeah. So this will help me, part of, part of all of this GIS system and the collector app that we've talked about is part of helping us with budgeting. So once we, we understand the frequency of these needed, because they don't, they're not all going to be needed to be cleaned every year. Some will probably need to be maybe cleaned twice a year, and others won't need to be cleaned but every three years.
True.
So that helps me, gives me a tool on how to budget these. And then after I have, like, one cycle done, I'll bet, have a better understanding each year of, hey, they're $50 apiece, and I've got 200 of them that need to be done every year. And then every other year, I need 400 of them done. And I have a reason, and I can explain that.
Basically, a preventative maintenance management plan.
Right. And, you know, I mean, if you really think about it, we didn't have those tools in the past. We didn't have GIS to help us with this. So to keep track of 718 catch basins, how would you do it? You know, it's a really tough thing.
Absolutely.
I mean, Allison's really helped with the, the GIS portion of it. I can't take all the credit. She's a whiz at that stuff. And she can probably show maybe the collector app.
The collector app is on her phone, but then it, it, you know, all we have to do is just tell somebody, whoever might be doing the work, and download an app. We give them a password, fieldworker1, blah, blah, blah. And then all of these, like, this is a layer that's for completed inspections. There's another one for field observations. So as soon as these become completed, there's like a check mark, and then it creates an output that Dave can look at to see, like, okay, select all of the catch basins that were at, you know, 100% full. And, you know, all kinds of things like that. He can assign tasks, and it'll just allow us to keep track of it.
Slick. I mean...
Lot better.
And this quote includes them putting that into the system. Sophie?
Couple of questions on the budget, if I may, on the quote, that I don't understand. So culvert cleaning by hour is 195.
So are we talking about the quote?
Yeah.
The estimate?
Yeah. So I can understand the price per catch basin. That's pretty easy, $56, 780...
Oh, oh, okay. So...
Have an hourly charge.
Yeah. So I asked for an hourly charge in case we ran into an obstruction or something within the piping. That's just not a cleaning that's in the catch basin itself. It could be, like, and another, another part of this is, like, we're looking at cleaning out a culvert under Atlantic Avenue that's filled up with sediment. And we want to see if there's an obstruction in between, somewhere under the bridge or the, the causeway. We're going to probably go by the hour and vacuum, rack it out, that debris until we, we can see what, see in there where we need to. And they don't give you a flat rate for that kind of thing.
Because they don't know, they don't know until they open it. It's like surgery. They don't know how long they're going to be in there.
Right.
It would be, it would be nice to have an update, because basically, you're going to go over budget, right?
Maybe not. No, I think, I think we'll be, I mean, it's possible, I guess. Yeah, sure. But I will stop before I get to that point.
Okay. And the other question I have, for every 50 cents in fuel cost increase, a dollar will be added to the per basin price. So that's a pretty good hedge.
Well, yeah. And if you look at Badger's quote, which you probably didn't get, theirs is, you know, their fuel fluctuation recovery cost is 6% of all charges. They do, they all do it differently.
Okay.
So he's just protecting himself because he's, this truck is, it isn't a, it isn't a, a pre-essence. It's a big truck with a big tank on it and uses probably a little bit of fuel. And he has to, this is a...
Just, just rounds it up, basically.
Yeah.
Well, that's a pretty good roundup. I mean...
Right.
What was the other quote?
6% of all charges.
No, the other quote, the other quote was $48,081. So it's $8,000 more.
Oh.
So this one was significantly less overall. And he's done some for us already, and he's familiar with the app. So...
To Sophie's point, the culvert cleaning is an hourly add to the contract, correct?
That's, well, it's, it's, he's saying it's $40,208 to do 718 catch basins.
Yes.
And then if we, if we choose to do culvert cleaning, it's $195 an hour.
To do it.
To do it.
So what I don't understand is why you would take the 195 and the 150 and add it to the contract price for one hour?
Exactly.
I think that it's...
I asked for you to authorize up to 45,000.
Yeah. Yeah, you have 45 that you put in there.
Keep in mind, this is for doing 718 catch basins, the quote that you have. And I think 100 or over 100 have already been cleaned.
Right. That was the other part of it. So he, he estimated...
We're only going to do 618, not 718.
And that whole 718, I mean, we think we have them all, but we don't have.
Yeah, there might be others.
I mean, so if we find a catch basin that is not in the system, which happened, for instance, last week on Mount Batty Street, right, like, there's a little bit of leeway, but...
The thing, I asked, I asked how long he thought it would take to clean that culvert out. And he told me eight hours, and that's $1,500. And you're, and we're asking for 45, and the, the amount to do all the catch basins is 40. So we should be pretty good.
With 45,000, $1,500 to close the...
For eight hours.
Do you feel comfortable with it? I feel comfortable with it.
I do. And, you know, I... I do and, you know, we do have a little bit of a buffer because we did 100 of them already. So, you know, I think we're going to be good.
May I motion to accept this proposal?
I make a motion to accept this proposal to spend up to $45,000 to clean the catch basin and the culvert.
And, and take the funds from the stormwater reserve account?
And take the funds from the stormwater reserve.
Second?
What an appropriate place to take it from. Not select word contingency, but second, second.
Motion made in second, discussion.
No, we're done.
All those in favor? Thank you, David. You're welcome.
Good job.
Great seeing you guys again. Have fun in the culverts.
Like, this is a deal in the, you should see how long it takes me just to like look in each of them and take a picture and put it in the system. Like, I don't even know how he.
I don't, I don't dispute this, I'm just, I'm just, you know, it's the first time I have to look into those charges. Yes, actually I do. Actually, I do.
Bring your boots.
When he's on Chestnut Hill Road, you could just run outside and watch him.
There's no catchment on Chestnut Hill.
No catch basins?
No, we have no, there's one at the bottom. We're the, we're the least liked street in town.
Maybe you just have the best stormwater management.
No, no, deal, I'd love to do that.
With that, raise the flag. With that, we have, we can move on to our one discussion item, Audra, which is the update, I assume is Audra, on the parking management study initiative.
Yes, so it's, it's a very quick update. We are having the next, the second meeting of the task force next week.
On the 29th?
On the 29th. And the whole purpose of that meeting will be to go over the guiding principles and those have been decided on by the group that we have, the working group. Yeah, the, sorry, the task force, that's what we're calling it. So the task force was sent out a list of guiding principles that were developed by the consultant, John Burke, and it's sort of based on, you know, work that he's done in lots of communities in New England on development of parking strategies. And so he sent the list out to the task force members and they read through everything and rank them and based on their rankings and input that he has received from a number of stakeholder interviews, I think he's interviewed, I believe it was 12 stakeholders. We'll sort of, the group will identify what the, you know, guiding principles will be for the town of Camden in the development of a parking management strategy. So, you know, it's the, it's the second step and it's really important sort of for the foundation of the whole plan and it'll all be televised. I'm going to have to ask about using the meeting owl for this because there's going to be remote participation as well as in person.
What is the overall schedule in your mind for this, this, this parking management study? But do we see a product in six months or, do you have any idea?
Yeah, so I will have to read through because I do have a timeframe based on his scope of work, but I kind of, I kind of forgot exactly when it's supposed to.
We could update in the future perhaps, just so we know, we're looking at six months, three months.
Yeah, and I think after this meeting, I'll sort of circle back and let you know that these were the guiding principles that were, you know, determined by the group. But he's very, very thorough. He's done, been here to do parking counts, that was, you know, during the kickoff meeting, he was doing, you know, sort of parking counts during peak demand. He'll come back after the, you know, because we're still kind of in the high season here. He'll come back after that to do parking counts during sort of the shoulder or low season.
I see.
And then, you know, once he's got that data collected and he's got an idea, you know, what the sort of foundational principles are and what we're trying to achieve, that's kind of the basis for developing the plan.
Perfect. Any questions, Allison?
Is there a list of the guiding principles that we could, I guess my overall question is like, how do we make sure that this doesn't, it sounds like it's a great process in a lot of ways, but how do we make sure that it's not one of those things that gets to the end and, well, right, and like the select board says, well, I didn't agree to those guiding principles and then people say, well, how did they decide those? And why were those 12 stakeholders chosen and not me? And I know that we can't get, you can never get rid of all of that because there will always be a grievance with the process and there's never a perfect process, but what steps can we take to prevent?
He's got a, in the schedule, there'll, there'll be a meeting where it's like seeking input on the scope of the study, guiding principles, you know, sort of his findings from the stakeholder interviews, I'm reading off his scope of work. He'll present the data that he collected and some of the analysis that he's done as well as preliminary findings. So he'll, he'll do this presentation and that'll give everyone here a good opportunity to, you know, sort of give input into what's been done so far. And that's kind of, that's, that's sort of after the group kind of gets together to do a little bit more work because we're really, I mean, he's, he's in data collection stage and the group is really in sort of the very, very beginning of kind of like understanding, you know, the scope of what we're going to do and the issues and what the possibilities are.
What about like the, you know, is the group being told they should, they really need to read the downtown master plan and they need to, in a nice way, but I, I know that I participated in a lot of things in town before having a good understanding of some of the things that already have been agreed on and, I mean, there's really good stuff in.
So they, they haven't, but, but John has and I kind of see John's work as like a direct, like implementation of a recommendation of the master plan.
Sophie?
Yeah, I want to, I want to weigh in here because I, I'm part of this task force and the first meeting was very rich in conversations and everybody really voiced their visions and idea for this parking study and, and what they felt would be critical areas of study for the consultant. And I was really amazed that we didn't have a huge span in different visions. There's, it's quite consensual, the discussions we've had on the goals we want to have for the study. So I'm, I'm confident that, you know, guided by his expertise in doing this and he's done that in many different, many similar coastal communities, that we can come with a pretty, come up all together with a pretty solid proposal that's not going to be very, it's a very rigorous.
Controversial, it's very rigorous.
Very rigorous database, factual process.
Look forward to future updates in the near term, after this meeting.
I would have loved to have, I heard from a couple of people that that meeting was great and then it wasn't live streamed and so I couldn't.
And that's sort of the thing, I feel like.
I trust you guys to deal with parking, but I do know that there's only one thing I've been screamed at about more than the dams in Camden.
Oh, absolutely. And I, I do think that.
This whole science-based approach is always.
After you kind of see him and hear about the process and get, and get to kind of understand where we're at in it, I think that you'll, you'll kind of, they'll put your mind at ease as to the way that he's going to walk us through it. I, I felt just after meeting with him that there's absolutely, you know how sometimes with consultants, there's a little bit of misogyny you need to do to get them to understand exactly, like, well, this is, you know, this is sort of like, you're not accounting for this issue in Camden, like, no, he's kind of been through it all and seen it all and has like a very sort of.
That's why I really, I'm really eager to hear him. So can we make sure the rest of it's all live streamed and maybe he could give like an overview of some of this visionary stuff that was.
Yeah.
And trust me, and I think Audra can, can say so, I've asked a million questions during the meeting and made lots of, you know.
You didn't even ask the most questions.
Didn't I?
I don't think you did, actually. There's a lot of people asked a lot of questions.
It's true, it was a pretty, it was a pretty rapid fire. It was good, no, it was good, it was good.
Well, you don't need me then, that's perfect.
No, it doesn't feel like we're leaving any stone unturned.
Yeah, he's, he's very thorough, very rigorous and it's a very kind of set process that you get the impression he's done a million times before.
That's a nice feeling.
It was, it was a really, really nice feeling.
This is going to be, they're setting the bar very high.
No, I was, I can't, yeah, I mean, it was.
What's his name again?
John Burke.
Great.
Sophie, was there any synergy from Article Two that we're putting on the Warren article? Is that a part of your discussion at all? Or has that just been a completely?
It's been brought up, but John's got a planning background and when I kind of explained to him prior to the study that this was, you know, something that was moving forward and going to be on the ballot in November, he was kind of like, oh, yeah, of course you would make that change. That's pretty antiquated that you were requiring businesses and, and, you know, uses to go through that sort of requirement, so.
The master plan said for us to make that change 10 years ago.
Get around to it.
Yeah, and his knowledge of the town and he's already walked all over town and he, he's really good, grasped a really good.
Good. With that, we'll move on to our reports for our select board reports. Sophie, do you want to start with anything?
Well, I think, no.
Okay, Allison?
I just want to echo the kayak situation on the public landing and I was really happy to hear that somebody else was thinking the same thing and it also goes back to the, yes, and this idea of like two precious parking spaces, because it really gets down, that is at the heart of so many things that we do or do not do in Camden. And I have been doing a lot of reviewing of old documents, like I like to do for the town, and one of them was a file from Mary Louise Curtis Bach and the Olmsted Brothers. It's not often known that she played a big role in the, in the public landing also and gave the town as part of her kind of vision for Harbor Park. She, after she finished with that, she tried to move on to the public landing, which was just a series of burned buildings at the time, agreed to pay to have it cleaned up, this was in like 1936, on the condition that the town would slowly implement this Olmsted plan for the public landing. And over a period of about 20 years, there's correspondence back and forth between the town and the Olmsted firm and Mary Louise Curtis Bach and where she just expressed continued disappointment at the lack of vision and the hyper-focus on parking for the town. And so there's supposed to be all of this green space down there and it was supposed to be sort of this public park-like feeling and it's been whittled down to just this like one little tree in, in the middle. And so it'll, I think there's, there's a lot of, you know, excitement in town to maybe think about things a little bit differently and it's good, maybe kayak racks and some green space can eventually go there.
I would agree with you. Matt Siegel, Mr. Siegel.
Just quickly, Sophie and I were, I was just going to walk about with Josh Moore from Lyman Morse and there's lots of plans in terms of that private marina and certainly advocated that those plans are made as public as possible and disseminated on webpages of information because it's going to be a controversial one, no matter what side of the particular politics of this one that you decide to be on. We should do our best to be transparent and get that information out as quickly as possible. Sophie, do you want to add anything to our meeting with Josh?
I think, I think it's a good, thank you, I, I thought you would, you would give the update on this. I think it's also very important that the role and the power of the town in this whole process and the role and, and the vision of Lyman Morse be very made, very clearly public, made very publicly clear, sorry, so that there's no confusion. And that's, you know, Matt said that very appropriately, that we need transparency, clarity and consistency.
Cool. The only comment, it's really, it's just maybe a future thing for an agenda or not, but I get a lot of confusion from people in town about our MDOT project that we've, you know, just, well, almost completed, except for the corner of French and Brown. But, no, I know you didn't, I'm not, I'm not talking to that, but, but the confusion comes in around just a little bit, simply may I clarify at some point, the number of parking spaces we lost. You know, we've got to just throw a piece of out that says this, the facts. I've heard numbers as high as 40?
That we lost 40?
That's not something I hear a lot about.
I've heard from people about 20, 40, 30. Okay.
You announce the number?
Yes.
Yeah.
Six.
Net.
We lost six total.
Net.
Total.
Right. Well, we gained some and we lost some, is that correct? But then you, we netted a loss of six.
But we gained like some parking, we gained some motorcycle spots and we gained some bike ride spots.
Yeah.
But no bike racks yet, when are we getting the actual bike racks?
I understand, I understand. Well, it's confusion about the crosswalks, the kind of thing, that's what occurred, but I'm glad you stated that's what we needed. We all have the right number in our heads, net six, thank you.
There'll be a question on the town.
There'll be a question, there'll be.
FAQ, you can put it on the FAQ.
Binding question.
Not binding question on the parking bingo.
Are you hearing a lot of people that are like, I think we lost too many parking spots?
I've heard it go as far as want to sign a petition.
Bring back more parking spots?
I guess to stack cars, I don't know, but it's just that the emotional, emotional element of it, as long as we just, just publish the reality so that we're all speaking the same language, I didn't think it was six, I thought it was 10, but that we lost, but fine, see, even I didn't know the exact number until Audra just stated it. We need to just get that out there and keep it out there.
I would like us to start actually counting the number of bike spaces too, because there are very few.
When we add them, you mean?
I mean, do we even bother as a town now to count how many bike racks slots we have or?
We should, we should.
Because try to ride your bike to the town office and.
Yeah, I get it, I get it. Just some of us, we just have a tendency of trying to, you know, go to the next huge challenge and, and some of the low-lying commentary just needs to be stunted and that's all it takes, just we just did, thank you.
No, that's why we have you here to tell us what the.
No, it's, everybody talks to different people, that's what really. And that's what really, I don't, I'm sharing names, I'm not going to do that, but it's important, well.
If the complaints continue.
People have a perception of what occurred with this, with the crosswalks and they're counting, you know, two on each side of the street and I try to explain that's not what occurred, but they didn't go out and count spaces.
We barely eliminated anything.
We actually went out and we, we did everything we could to re-measure, sorry, we, we re-measured each parking space and in some situations we were able to reduce the size of a parking space and then shift everything over a little bit so we didn't lose like one on each side. And when we just couldn't do it, then we lost one, but we made one bigger. So we, that was kind of how we did it and, and we actually went to the extent of power blasting off some of the lines and redoing the lines. We really made a really, really good attempt to try to save as many as we could. We didn't just take one on each side.
Also, a point of, I have a little bit of bragging about Dave St. Laurent and Rick Seibel, so after they went through, they went through, walked out, like walked that whole stretch, measured everything, re-measured everything, re-looked at everything and John Burke, the parking consultant, sort of came through, I think it was the week after everything was striped. And part of what he was doing was taking an inventory of all on-street parking spaces in the study area and he said to me that they, he, he couldn't have laid it out better. He has never seen an example of it laid out better, like the parking.
I'm always impressed by that.
And, and he's, he's somebody who thinks of it from an optimization perspective. So not only is it safer, it's optimized as well in a manner that, you know, makes it easier to see pedestrians and not hit them.
And compared to some of the parts of the planet, the, one second, Allison, the, the size of parking spaces here in Maine always boggle my mind because they're quite larger than the rest of the country. Even in California, I think some people would not be able to parallel park into those size spaces.
You know what the irony is, we measure out parking spaces for trucks with snowplows on them and when we need the least amount of parking is when trucks have snowplows on them, so.
Allison?
Speaking of which, the, our spaces are sometimes smaller than in other places and that requires a lot of care from people and I see all over the place just horribly careless parking jobs and I'm not seeing ticketing happening in those cases. Like, if we're going to optimize the spots, it would be, I think the police could be just slightly more aggressive in terms of making sure that you're in the spot. But also, before we congratulate ourselves too much on making things so much safer for pedestrians, we're, what we did on Main Street is still much below the standard. So we, it's slightly safer for pedestrians, but as, as always, we bent over backwards to accommodate things for cars as much as possible. I think it's great, I was very, almost like a brave thing to do, to change that at all.
Got halfway there.
Right, we got halfway there, but it was not what anybody would recommend in terms of like optimized for pedestrian safety.
The losses would have been much bigger.
The losses of cars would have been much, much bigger. So we still, I don't want anybody to think we just.
No, we didn't.
Fully implement. Like fully implemented the recommendations.
No, we, we walked the tightrope.
We're not done either. There's still parts of the pedestrian safety program and the crosswalks where we're going to put bollards out and we got the bike racks going in. We just, you know, we had the downtown project going on. Next year, you're going to see more, more maturation of that whole program.
After winter.
Because people still park in the, the places that aren't parking spots anymore. It's like, they're still just, so once there's a bike rack there or something, it'll be.
Once there's a bollard and a bike rack in those locations.
Well, also the Vespas. It's a great place to park in the triangle.
True.
I've noticed two or three.
And I can, that doesn't block the view of pedestrians so much. I mean, that is.
The truck, true. Anyhow, thanks, Dave. Thank you very much. Audra, what do you have?
All right. So we are going to be interviewing a software company about online licensing and permitting software that integrates with the property database. So I, I put Janice as the lead on that project because she's responsible for a lot of licensing. So we're going to be looking into that and hopefully bringing a recommendation to you all on, you know, choosing a vendor to go with. And.
About time.
Yeah. Yeah. So it's, it's a big project, but we're chipping away at it. I volunteered to be part of a group that MMA put together on housing. So there's a commission in the legislature that was formed. And they were very careful to specify exactly how many members of each political party and where from would be on that commission. And it was very devoid of any municipal representation other than MMA. So, you know, MMA luckily recognized that issue and wanted to form a group to give them sort of recommendations that would be passed on to the legislature. And so I'm participating in that. A lot of the members on that group had, you know, planning backgrounds and were very focused on, you know, what sort of state-level legislative changes could be made to reduce certain barriers to the development of housing. But there was a, there wasn't a lot of talk about like, you know, tax incentives or disincentives that will help with the development of housing. And I feel like that's one area where the state has a lot of authority and control that affects municipalities and affects what happens on the ground. So Carrie Leishman and I met to kind of brainstorm some ideas. And we have some things that we're going to pass on to Kate DeFord MMA. And hopefully she'll pass on to the commission. And also, Dave Miramont has been very supportive of bringing those ideas to the committee, one of the committees he's on, which looks at housing issues. We, as Dave mentioned, we met with MDOT, our regional traffic engineer, and Doug Coombs, who is the construction project manager for this region, to talk about, one, how we're going to fix the, the tip-down in front of French and Bron and that, you know, really crazy grade that causes a lot of issues for, you know, pedestrians who are trying to, it's like climbing a mountain.
Just referred to as the mini snowball.
Yeah, the ski solemn that we, that we have out in front of French and Bron. So it's a, it's a complicated engineering challenge, given that it's, it needs to be retrofitted. And it all sort of comes down to grades and water diversion. And it's MDOT's issue to fix. We just are there to try to provide suggestions.
Downtown master plan, which has a design that would have accommodated that.
Well, that's the thing. If that had been done in the first instance, then it would be much easier to deal with. But now that the stormwater system has been put in place, you know, it makes it more complicated.
Much more. Is there any schedule for that remediation?
Well, they still are grappling with what to do to make sure that by, you know, getting the, the grade they need, they're not creating a stormwater issue on Mechanic Street, which is our street.
So we could slam into winter.
I have a feeling we're going to be right up against the wire with this one. Did you?
We, we stress the importance of getting this done before winter because of the safety issue.
Yep, yep.
Something will be done before winter. It might not be the final.
I see, I see. I see, I see. Maybe a tram.
I'm just, I have this vision of people with a wheelchair.
Scary.
It's scary.
Anything else, Audra?
So also, as part of that meeting, their, their actual sort of purpose of it was the, the meeting about the fixing that issue was an aside, but they really wanted to encourage us to apply for their MPI program. So the MPI program is basically when there's a state aid road within, that, you know, is in the borders of a municipality, I'll be blunt, when they, it's not a high priority for them. They know there are problems on it, but they don't have the funds available to fix the problem. The MPI program was created to basically incentivize towns to move projects that they're probably not going to do for quite some time up the list by contributing 50% funding.
I see.
So it's like a 50-50 MDOT town. If we were a town with a lower valuation, they would contribute more funding, but they, they won't in Camden's case. So it's 50-50.
And they believe that's going to change the amount of projects to be done?
They're, they're hoping that if we know about it, we might apply. And one possibility, given the discussions we've been having and some of the, you know, issues that we want to solve is John Street, believe it or not, is a state aid road.
Right.
That, you know, when it turns in John Street to Hosmer Pond Road.
Yep.
And I'm, it's, I'm disappointed that John French left before I got to say this.
I know, this is.
Yeah, that, we, we thought that, you know, of all the, the state aid roads that we have and sort of the kind of list of priorities in terms of pedestrian safety and connectivity, a sidewalk, you know, drainage, fixing the drainage issues.
I see, I see.
Sewer expansion.
Sewer expansion, sidewalk on John Street seemed to be something that was a really good candidate for an MPI.
That's what the comprehensive plan says should be our number one priority for like growth areas and for pedestrian safety. Because it also has that semi-assisted living facility there.
Yep, it does. What's the schedule for this MPI? We're supposed to apply within a month or six months?
Well, we did say to them that given that we have Pearl Street on our plate for this year, that we're probably looking at FY '24. I mean, we could budget for it in '23, but it's more likely we're going to be, we're going to have enough sort of work done that we'll have a good construction estimate by FY '24 budget development.
I would think, yeah. Interesting.
I do think we should, you know, give a heads up to be ready to have some sort of level of budget for engineering work. And this kind of leads into my philosophy of wanting a little bit more engineering work done before we come up with construction estimates and then base the whole project budget around a very fuzzy.
Hand sketch.
Yes.
Yeah, again. Go ahead, Dave.
There was one more part of that, Audra. That was the, that we already had been probably approved or they're reviewing the $500,000 from the Heads Up program that would deal with the pedestrian portion of those improvements. And the MPI portion would deal with the stormwater and the road portion. So, so we would get, you know, almost a million dollars, a million dollars towards that, towards that project.
There's two different buckets.
Yep. So it wasn't just one. It was actually two $500 amount.
And if you, and if, the decision is to use ARPA funds for sewer expansion in that area.
Right, right.
It's a very good chance that a pretty significant, pretty expensive project could be very.
Could get done in reasonable budget.
Like, yeah, grant-funded more.
I just, I just commented about 50-50 was that their, so MDOT's budget is woefully inadequate. And I'll take over some big grants. They're not going to be able to fund 50% of anything.
Yeah, I mean, it was interesting.
Behind the curve now.
I was telling Bob after this meeting that the, the engineer assigned to our region, he's been working at MDOT for 11 years. And he was saying when he started, the going rate to build a new road or to do a full depth reclamation rebuild was about a million dollars. And now that's probably, that's what they pay for like a shim and overlay for a mile of road. So, yeah.
Well, they just spent a ruin north, mile and a half yesterday.
So it's, yeah, it's just.
It's a lot, yes. Anything else?
Um, oh, for the Midcoast Economic Development District. So I was part of the committee that reviewed a list of projects that would be part of the comprehensive economic development strategy. And there were some projects that were, Rockport put their sewer expansion on Route 90 on there. But nothing has been submitted yet for Midcoast Internet. So I'll help make sure that that project is on the SEDS list. I just wanted to get it out there because that's really important.
Yes.
If it's not on the SEDS list, you can't apply for EDA funds or Northern Border Regional Commission funds.
Wow, that's important.
And that's, that's my updates.
Can I just ask a quick follow-up question on the, the licensing software? Is that how we would also deal with Airbnb registration requirements?
Yep.
Yeah, that usually covers that.
What, does, did that ordinance, did that have a implementation deadline?
No. No.
How do you think we are, it's a pretty big task, right?
It is, yeah. And that's really.
That's why we need to have this other thing going first and then.
Yeah. Yeah, it's interesting. I've had a few people ask, call and ask about it because they want to make sure that their properties are registered.
Interesting.
That's great.
With that, instead of Mr. Ratner, I appoint Ms. Mina to make the motion to adjourn.
The chairman has no report?
I did.
Well, maybe we can.
So you weren't listening, were you?
You know.
I think the strap around your ears too tight.
Yeah, sorry.
Well, Bob, you know, because Mark is listening from his bed, perhaps we should just send him our best regards.
I was going to close with that. Just, I was going to say, Mark, if you're listening, shut it off and take your meds.
And wish him the best and his family.
We'll be seeing him soon.
Shall I move to adjourn the meeting?
Very well done. Mark will be proud of you.
I hope so.
Second. Mark, Matt seconds. All's in favor? Thank you, thank you, thank you. Good to see you again, Mr. Haskell.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.